I call the meeting to order. It is now 6:05. And thank all of you for staying to hear all these good things we're going to talk about, you know, later on. Dr. Head, you're up on the agenda now.
Okay, so we have one introduction and that is Beth Marshall with Community Impact. And Beth, would you let everybody know who you are? Glad to have you again. And then we're moving into my piece.
Yeah. Okay, at this point, we're going to approve the minutes of the August 3rd, 2017 workshop and regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes of August 3rd. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. We were now moved to, now the chancellor, you're on now.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we've got a couple of updates and most of this is going to be spent talking about what went on with the hurricane and the flooding, but I also want to let you know that we received we had a news release today. We were recognized as one of the top colleges for Hispanics to attend. We have twenty, almost 25,000 students. The Department of Ed has recognized us. So we'll bring that, I think we sent you an email today, the board, but we'll get that out. So let's talk a little bit about what happened with the hurricane. And so we're going to have, I'm going to change the order a little bit and go through this, but so, so let me talk to you about the enrollments. This is the amazing thing. Our head count is up 4% despite the hurricane. 4% our contact hours are up 2%. We're actually up five, what, how many are you at Kingwood? 5%. Which is amazing. So what we did was Catherine's going to come up and talk in just a minute about Kingwood and what we're doing that's different from some of the other colleges. So we got, we extended the deadlines. We have a number of late starts and I think the board's been updated on most of this. Catherine's going to talk about leased space. We have, we, we've been financial aid. We've been, everybody has done what they're, what they should be doing, trying to help students. Our priority was to keep the students in school and make sure that they come back. So, and that's happened. So, and I mean, the vice chancellors, everybody has worked on this. Not one person has not worked on it. And the faculty have been very helpful and staff, not only at the colleges, but at the system office have all been working on this. I see some of our police officers here and I'm reluctant to single out any one particular group, but the police officer showed up in the middle of the hurricane and stayed there at the facilities, as did our facility people. So they actually spent the night there, as did Amos. Did you spend the night there? And so did Mario. So Amos is still standing. Mario's not, but Amos is still standing. We have, and we're going to talk, I'm going to have Nicole come up in just a minute, but let me, let me just make sure the board knows what's going on. We had a number of expenditures, emergency expenditures. We will come back and the board will ratify all of those. We're not quite sure what everything is right now because we just moved ahead and that was allowable under the board policy, but we'll come back and make sure that the board approves or ratifies all the expenditures. Right now, we just don't have a firm grip on that. I'm going to have Jennifer come up in just a minute, but first I would like Nicole Robinson. Are you going by Robinson or go to?
I have a question before, before you go to Nicole. You indicated that the enrollment was up 4% and this was compared to last fall.
Right.
Okay. Now, when we did our budget, we did a budget based on a 3% increase. So that's awesome. Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, before we, we don't
I'm not sure if I'm correct in my head.
We're not sure. We have more money than we thought we did, but we will, I'm looking at Jennifer because we had this discussion yesterday. So we're in, we're in good shape from the budget standpoint. Let me put it that way. So we've got so many other expenditures right now and she's going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. So Nicole is the executive director of our foundation and Nicole has been overseeing the aid distribution. We had $500,000 set aside through an anonymous donor for our students and then 200. And again, just so you'll, so you'll know where that money came from, 200 out of the chancellor's fund that we set aside that came from Jakarta proceeds. So, so some good things are happening here. So I asked Nicole just to give a quick update on where we are with everything.
Yes, so as of this morning, we have 2,114 students and 235 employees that have applied for assistance through our assistance fund and application as a result of the hurricane. As you heard, we have one anonymous donor and additional funding from the chancellor to work with. So to date, in the employee fund, we funded 161 of those employees and they've received approximately 82,000 in emergency funding already in checks. We have another round of evaluations happening for some of the applications, plus more to come based on additional funding that's coming in. So that's an ongoing process, but that's where we are right now with those. In phase one, I can say of the student fund, there are 1,792 applicants in the phase one. So we have a balance that we're working with. We had to go through enrollment. So we had to take us a point in time and then verify that through enrollment to make sure those students who applied are actually enrolled. So of those, just under 1,500 met enrollment requirements on the official day on Monday. So that's why it's a phase one. So that was Monday. So my office is currently working on 1,350 checks to go out tomorrow to students, student assistants. 200 of those are receiving $250 just for loss of income because we found a lot of students didn't have flooding, but they weren't able to work and that made quite an impact on them. And so our donor agreed to help with some loss of income. And 1,149 students are receiving $500 for flooding, home damage, car damage, or displacement. Again, trying to figure out how to just be a little bit of assistance for those students to get them through because we know our priority is keeping them enrolled and keeping them on the path. I can tell you, we already have more than 330 applicants since we did the download and, and did the vetting and so that's why that's phase one. Phase two will be happening as soon as those are complete and those will go out next week. Both employee and student assistant applications will close on Friday at 5:00 PM and we've put that on the website. I was on a call today with the team, the team at Kingwood and we're getting that information out, making sure that they know that we're closing that out because as much as we would like to help everyone, the money will run out, even though it is a large and very generous amount. So I do want to tell you that I have a, a quick thank you for, to Amos McDonald and the marketing team because you heard reports about the 2016 floods, the 2017 floods. Our marketing team was able to put this online and they made it, these applications. So last time they were paper. This time they were fully accessible and through that, it was a really user-friendly process. We took the burden off the campuses so they could focus on what they needed to do and we took on the process of doing those evaluations through a rubric and an evaluation process. And through that, we discovered that 45% of our students filled that out on a mobile device. So we didn't have to worry about them going to a laptop or getting a PDF and printing it out. They filled it out and signed it on a mobile device and 33% of our employees who applied did that as well. And so we're really happy and I just, I wanted to commend them because those are the behind the scenes people that kind of makes so many things happen and make it look good. And it downloads into Excel. So presidents, yes, I'm going to be able to send you an Excel spreadsheet of all the students that were assisted so you'll know who they are and I'll be able to send that same information to financial aid because we need to report that for regulation. So we've been really fortunate to help some of our students and some of our employees and we know it doesn't go as far as we'd like it to, especially with the stories that we've heard. It's not going to meet all the needs, but the good news is we're making a difference in quite a number of people's lives. And we received an email at the foundation office that I asked Dr. Head if it was okay to share and the recipient said I could share it as well. And so this illustrates this the best in, in my view. So it says, "To all, I don't even know where to begin. The past two weeks have been a literal whirlwind of both experiences and emotions for my wife and myself. At 7:30 AM on August 30th, we were rescued from our home in spring. I will make a long story very short. At 7:15 AM on Monday morning, I looked over the railing at three and a half feet of water. I've never experienced a flood, but I know fifth grade science taught me that with that much water and power being on, that was a bad idea. But the power was on and the cable was on and that's when we decided we needed to get out. We called a friend who knew someone with a boat. The rest is mostly a blur. They were at our house within 20 minutes, rushed us out through waist-deep water and onto a boat. Three adults, two dogs, and my wife's youngest son's ashes. The rest of us can drown, but don't let that get wet, please." And he didn't. That first, first boat actually capsized almost immediately, dumping all of us in the water, but that man held those ashes above his head the whole time. A second boat was right behind them and they scooped us up and got us to a business that had opened their warehouse for people to wait for rides, relatives, et cetera. We lost almost everything on the first floor, but we were fortunate enough to have things upstairs to get us by and get us started once we find a new home. I didn't tell this story to garner sympathy, but to illustrate the type of outstanding things that the foundation is doing and the difference you are making in people's lives. August 30th was the single scariest, most traumatizing, devastating day of my life. The support and assistance we've received from family and friends have been wonderful, but it's the support and assistance from Lone Star College and the foundation that has been nothing short of extraordinary. I am humbled, grateful, and want to thank each and every one of you. This is from one of our very own. So Dr. Smith, Dr. Head, and trustees, thank you for allowing the foundation to be able to do this for our employees. Thank you for allowing us to move funds around. You can tell that the chancellor and this donor has a lot of trust in our ability to put these donations to work and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So this is the same donor that gave us 250 the last time we had floods, then gave us 500 and just probably some more, so. So, I mean, we've got stories like that all over the place.
Yes.
Helen and I talked to one of our custodians up here. He'd make 28,000. He was flooded in his apartment. He lost, did he lose both of his cars? I don't know. That's, that's what we're dealing with, trying to help people. And so the maximum for the employees is 1,000 and the maximum for students is 500. So we're trying to spread that as far as we can and trying to help as many people as we can. And we're, all we're trying to do is, the amazing thing about this is that we, well, this is not amazing, but so we didn't charge anybody for time off. If they missed, they missed. And we were working with them last week and the, I bet 98% of our employees showed up the first day or so. It's amazing how their commitment to work and then the students. And we've seen the same thing with the students and the employees, so.
Fantastic, Nicole, but one question. You may have said this earlier and I missed it. I know you indicated how many students responded, you know, via the system. How were the students notified that these funds were available?
They were
What process did we use to communicate that to?
The chancellor sent an email to all students and all employees and so the links were included there, but they have them at the campuses. It's on a website. The marketing team has created a Harvey Assistance website, resources for recovery. We posted all the documents that HR sent us just to make sure that they were available to everyone as they needed them.
And the reason I ask that there's, there's a couple of people in my neighborhood claiming they didn't know anything about it, so I can go back to them and challenge them to, to read stuff that they should be reading.
Well, we would tell all of our students that the way we communicate at Lone Star is through technology and on the website. So read your email, check the website. Link's not here. Butch is back there, but we were up. I don't think we ever went down. We, we went down in places like just for short, where the line got cut a little bit over to Tascasita, but that, we didn't go down on email. We've, we spent a lot of money on technology, so it all works. Unfortunately, we didn't have the same problems with Florida where we lost electricity like we did with Ike, but so our IT systems and our communication systems stayed up, but that's for all of them though. They need to check their.
Well, I'll tell them on Sunday at church, you go back and check your emails, but the deadline has passed since you didn't check it on time. Thank you.
It sounds like we did a wonderful job last year, 2016, and we did an even better job this year. I hope we don't get another opportunity to further improve.
I agree.
Kudos to everybody.
I don't want to be good at this anymore.
No, I don't.
Well, I can't overstate the amount of work that goes on behind the scenes. I mean, Alicia's area, financial aid and all the discussions we've had going on about how to communicate with students and trying to coordinate all that and reaching out to students, even after we dropped, dropped students, we're still trying to reach out to them and figure out if money is their problem and seeing where they are and going, we, and we've got all these late start classes that we've created to help them. We're giving them every opportunity to get in school and for our employees, by the way, again, we went back, if they had vacation that week when we let everybody go, they get their vacation back. We, I mean, we've got some people who couldn't show up when we came back to work, so we were, we were staggering that. And even now, I told a group yesterday, if you have to come in a minute early and leave a minute late for the rest of your life, we'll help you with this because people, I mean, we've still got some people that are having problems and so we're, we're working with everybody. So, so thank you, Nicole.
Good job.
Gerald, do you want to come up and talk about shelters? So we had three of our colleges that served as shelters. Actually, we had four until Kingwood started taking on water and then we, we ended up with three. So the big one was down at North Harris.
So I may get emotional and you never should start a presentation like this, but no matter what I say, it's not going to do any justice to what actually happened to our colleges, to our students, to our employees. So the seven-minute presentation will, will give you a glimpse of some of this. So we call this Hurricane Harvey servant leadership and we truly believe in that. We were the first college, Lone Star College, North Harris to open. The chancellor, Mario, the police chief talked with, I think, the Office of Emergency Management for Harris County. I got a call them 30 Sunday night. They said, "We need space for evacuees." And I said, "Sure." I said, "Sure," and they said, "We need it now." And so all our power was out. Our chiller plants were closed because we were expecting power to go out. So in a short period of time, we were, we were able to open up something, serving the people in the Inverness Forest. So they had a mandatory evacuation, one of the first to be mandatory evacuated. So when we talk about the strategic priorities, that actually means something and no better time than during this natural disaster to show that we really care about student success, that even through the lack of classrooms, we were doing real experience, exponential learning, exponential learning, helping people, serving food and doing what we could and knowing that finances are important and we'll work on that. And the culture was just wonderful and then the partnerships were even, even better. And once again, our cultural beliefs, nowhere can you be tested with no fear than when you talk about Nicole looking down your rail and seeing three and a half foot of water with the power still on. So you'll hear about us being better together, acting intentionally, knowing that students matter, but also that employees matter and definitely our communities matter. So LSE Sci Fair, they were able to serve 97 guests. They were open for about three days and they started from Tuesday, August 29th to Thursday, August 31st. And so as you can see, they had many partners that were able to provide food, clothing, anything that you need. And so the first part of the storm, they actually were close to a tornado. I think one hit the Berry Center. And so even with that, they had over 400 volunteers help the, the guests. So sometimes when you have a natural disaster like this, you call them evacuees. We, we called them guests or residents because they're people and this was an opportunity for us to help our, our fellow neighbors. So one of the, one of the highlights, as you can see down there, is there's actually a, a lady that went into labor. Fortunately, she was not delivering the baby at the shelter, but at a hospital. But if she did have to deliver the baby at the shelter, we were ready at Lone Star College, specifically Sci Fair. And so this video, it's about a minute and nine seconds will tell you what happened there.
We knew very quickly that we had an amazing outpouring of generosity from our community. We had a sort of retail shopping area for people who were coming in as evacuees and also impacted families around the, the community. They could come in and get food or clothing or bedding. Our community partners fed the most extraordinary food here, so folks ate well. We had a medical center that doctors came in and stayed with us on call, as did trauma nurses. We had animal shelter people. We immediately opened a room so that folks, if they needed to, could go lie down with their dogs or animals because we know what that means. We tried to support the Texas State Guard because they were supporting us, just as much, anything, just their expertise and their companionship. What we found here, more than anything, was a shared commitment to our humanity, to make sure that people not only survive this event, but emerge from it wholer and more, more able to face the future than they had been before. So it, I think we all understood that this truly was a moment where we are better together and it's one of the major principles that Lone Star College lives by.
And if you remember the emails from the chancellor, please make sure your family and your friends are safe and your pets are your family and friends. So that was wonderful. I believe all the centers had kennels. So for Kingwood, I believe Dr. Pearson is going to be presenting something separate. So we were talking about at this time, the buildings that they were able to hold classes in, so. Montgomery was not a shelter, but if you can see the lady on the bottom right, Catherine Vasquez is an officer in Phi Theta Kappa and this is a clip from the Jimmy Fallon Show. They had two people that created a gospel choir at one of the shelters and our student was a volunteer at the shelter. I was notified this afternoon from Dr. Riley that Catherine was also part of the, the fundraising event for the city of Houston last night and there's a clip of her singing next to Stevie Wonder. So I think that's on our, our website. So that's pretty cool. So North Harris, we had 400 guests over six days. Dr. Head mentioned the, the police chief. We had several police officers there during the entire time. Mario Castillo was there. Amos McDonald was there and Jennifer, I don't know if you're daughters, but gave blankets and pillows. And I was fortunate to be able to get out of my neighborhood on Wednesday and then help out, but we already had our employees helping. And I asked them how they got there and they said, "Well, they were fortunate that they saw the tweet asking for help and that the roads weren't too bad." So as some places already had the resources, I believe the American Red Cross did not bring in their MREs or COTS for two days. And so we were relying on the people who brought food with them, as well as the neighbors across the street who had some water damage. They were bringing food as well. And it, it was just a, a great testimony of, of things that happened when people worked together and focused on survival and helping their fellow person. So in addition to these partnerships, there are several organizations and people that did not want to be officially recognized, but they were so helpful. For example, donating hotel rooms. We had several of our alumni that went to U of H that saw the, the tweets and volunteered. We had, some of them volunteer overnight. Some of us stayed there overnight. We had the Texas National Guard. We had a couple of our trustees and our board chair at North Harris and it was wonderful. A, a baby boy celebrated his nine-month, and so I have an 11-month-old daughter, so that, that bottom right picture over here on, on my side, that was very touching because the guy wanted to take a picture and he said, "You should post this." I said, "I don't want to post this." He said, "You should because we survived. We all survived." And so that, that meant a lot. And as you can see, Mario is the guy and then I'm there too. I think we had a relaxed wardrobe for that week, but so many people were so helpful and the bottom left on, on my side, you can see some of the, the residents there and they literally were sleeping the first night on blankets and towels and whatever we can open up and break into because we wanted to make sure that they were happy. And then if you guys don't know, Dr. Derek Mann's my vice president of enrollment management, Amos McDonald and Mario Castillo, they can make some really good pizza, toast, chorizo, everything, because we had, we had the opportunity to work with, with our cafeteria menuti and they donated a lot of the foods. And so we actually used their cafeteria so everybody at our location had a hot food every day, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And one thing that we wanted to show was sometimes people didn't know the conditions of their homes and sometimes they were separated from the family. So there's a 15-second clip here of a person who actually works for Spring ISD and her daughter and son-in-law were out of the country on a trip. And so she was forced to, to leave her home and she didn't know what the conditions were, but this shows their readiness. So I don't know if you heard in the background, they said, "Now you can go back to fighting." So that family actually could not fly into Bush Airport, so they flew to Miss, I think, Mississippi and rented a car and drove, I think it took them a couple of days with the road conditions the way they were. And then we also established a, a kids' college for our employees who had trouble with, with unofficial childcare. So we're not, we were in a licensed facility, but we made sure that they went to our library makerspace and had an educational experience. So Tomball had 79 guests over four days, Monday through Friday, and they worked very closely with the National Guards. They had kennels. And so I have confirmation that Dr. Leanne Nutt did not fly onto campus on a helicopter, but she did take a picture of a helicopter with somebody who was rescued from their home. So she wasn't in the helicopter, but she took a picture of somebody being dropped off in a helicopter. And then the, the Lone Star College Police over Tomball found out that one of the couples was actually celebrating their wedding anniversary, so got them a, a cake and so we celebrated that. So I know that President Arlon would have loved to be, to, to serve as a shelter, but as you can see from the pictures, they had a lot of water and they were able to work with our partners of Hewlett Packard and use some of their locations that were dry to set up some generators. So as you can see, all across Lone Star College, everybody was doing their part to make a difference and help somebody. And this is on our website. This was taken a couple of days into the, the hurricane, but I think it captures Lone Star College, our culture and our chancellor, because I do believe we, we model the behavior of the people that, that we serve. And so Dr. Head's a very good person and a great chancellor. Quoting Dr. Smith, he's not going anywhere anytime soon, but I'll read this. "The last several days have taken a heavy toll on our Lone Star College community, as well as our neighbors throughout the state. Many of you sustained serious loss to your homes and property. I also know that many of you are helping others. More than ever, our community's resilience and strength are on display for the world to see. The care and concern we've shown for each other is amazing." So that's what Lone Star College is. It's an amazing place with wonderful people before the storm, during the storm, and definitely after the storm. So thank you very much for your time. Do you have any questions? I'll do my best to answer.
Could you tell them what happened to your, so you were taking on water in your house?
Yeah, so like many, like many people, my, my street was flooded at nine o'clock and so I wasn't sure if the water was going to get in. We, we lost TV the first night. Power was out. Pumps weren't working. We live near the Spring Creek River and so 99 and Riley Fuzzell had already flooded. Some of the homes a mile and a half away were flooded, so we were fortunate. We were thinking that we were going to get water in. I made a makeshift from, from my baby's crib parts. I, I put my motorcycle tarp and, and covered the wall. I made a waterproof wall and I showed it to Dr. Head the next day because we had trouble with cellular service. He said, "You probably need to go online and look for other ways." But, but it's, it's similar to what's happening in the Caribbean and, and in Florida. You see what you see and you don't have access to anything else. So I saw water moving the way the wind was, 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 was moving and I had a couple of neighbors that are engineers and they said some words I can't repeat. And so when I, when I heard them say that, I thought, "Oh man, we're, I can't say what I was thinking." But, but fortunately, we were blessed. So like I told a group of our students in our, in the business class today, we have some groups. We have people who lost homes, people who had nothing happen to their homes, and then we have people who had a little happen to their homes, but their neighbors a mile or around them suffered great losses. So we are truly blessed and I'm so glad that our foundation and your leadership and Dr. Head and the great team here Dr. Head, and the great team here, have an opportunity to work together, serve our community, and we're continuing to serve the community.
So for the board, all of the presidents were, I mean, I, I didn't expect otherwise, but they all paid attention to their colleges. We were communicating constantly with each other, probably too, too much. I mean, there's nothing else to do. I tell people, after about four days of looking at the rain, and you're cooped up in the house with either whoever it is you're living with, or your, my wife will kill me, the, are your, are your pets, and so somebody said, well, how did you have time for email? I said, well, I mean, I mean, I didn't, I was, and if I never watch the Weather Channel again, I'll be really happy.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, but the presidents, I, I just, I have to tell you, I couldn't have asked for anything more. They were all keeping me informed and keeping each other informed about what they were doing and sharing information. And I know Sopha had water coming up close to about halfway over on her driveway, and I know Rebecca was flooded in, like most of us. In the middle of everything, my wife said, we need to get Gerald and his wife over here. I'm going, oh, dear, I don't know how, I, we can't get out, and he can't get out, so, and I don't know whether I want him and his baby coming down our house anyway.
Well, we, we were fortunate, we had a second floor, so that was our backup plan.
I told her you were fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Next time you'll get a generator so that you can, anyway.
Yes.
So, thanks.
Thank you.
By the way, you might have noticed all the food there. I don't think anybody went hungry there at all.
No.
By the way, there was more food there than you can possibly imagine at these shelters. I walked in there, and I thought, are you kidding me? It was like feeding an army in there, so, um, thanks.
And so one, one final thing, the, the chief coordinated a lot with the, with the county, and I want to thank Mario Castillo, who's not here tonight, and Amos. Amos actually was there every day from Sunday till the following Saturday, to the point I was, I was arguing with my wife, because I said, well, Amos can make it, he has a truck, and I have an SUV. Well, Amos has a Ford Bronco, and OJ-style, like really, really high. And so I didn't realize that, I would not have argued with my wife if I would have known that. But even Dr. Head was, he had to turn around one time, but he, he visited our campus, and so that means a lot to our employees and to our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask Catherine to come up and talk about what's going on over at Kingwood. We had other, we had a lot of people there. John Guest was there, Steve Butch back there, they were all serving in the kitchen and handing out stuff and moving water around, and Jennifer was there. We just had people there. Mike Fiori is back there, he was roaming around from place to place, taking a look at all the damage, and so we had, and I, I'm leaving somebody out, I know, but we had so many people that contributed, it's tough to identify one group, so.
That's for sure, and I apologize for my attire. I was sure the board meeting was going to be tomorrow night, so, um, well, this is the campus map. The San Jacinto River is past parking lot C about a mile, give or take a quarter of a mile. The shaded part is where the water came into our buildings, three to four feet in most of them.
The water, as you're, board, as you're looking at it, the board, I mean, the, uh...
For the audience, it's on the right, excuse me, the left-hand side is where the San Jacinto River comes across Sorders Road, and on the San Jacinto side is where, we know that's in the flood plain, so we don't have buildings, just parking lot, the learning garden, tennis courts.
So it came from the left of your screen all the way in, and before, back in 94, when I was the president, it came up to the edge of buildings one, two, and four. That's as high as it had come before. It had not come into the buildings before then.
Yes, yes. And building number four is what we call the CLA building, and the section that's closest to two in that building is where, is where our major chillers are that provide HVAC for six of our nine buildings. It's also where our mass communication system is, and it's where the major network closet is. All of that is destroyed. All of the facilities, vehicles, and lawn equipment was in that white space between two and four, all of that is destroyed. The building number five is the library, and six is in between, six is the admin building. That building is actually half of a story above four and five. That building did not flood, but the power is controlled by the chillers that don't work. And so six is still sitting there, and it is what it is until we can get power back. Seven is our health science facilities, and all of the healthcare programs are on the bottom floor, and they're, they're, they're destroyed. The facility number three is the PAC, Performing Arts Facility, that had the least amount of water, only about two feet. And so those are the things that happened. Luckily, our latest bond in 2008 built building number eight and nine. Eight is the music instructional building, nine is the student conference center. And we were able to occupy those on Monday. So this is what the facilities looked like when the waters came up.
So keep in mind, while all this is happening, the sewer system is also backing up in the building.
Yes, I'm, excuse me, down, when you look at the lowlands in the upper corner there, about a block from there is the City of Houston Water Treatment Plant, a sewage plant. So when the San Jacinto River flooded those pumps, all of that raw sewage then was in the river and came through our college. So we'll have really green grounds in about another week. Just different views of the campus. The aftermath, I took these with my cell phone when Jennifer, who all was with us, Jennifer, Bridget, our VIP ad, Eddie McFadden, my director, and by the way, they've just been wonderful. Eddie McFadden, our director of facilities, and Captain Gomez and several officers spent the night there. And just want to show you in the, the map, the, the right end where, where you see the double road on Kingwood Park, where it comes across parking lot G, they were launching about 200 boats from that corner to go rescue the folks in the nursing home that are right down the street from us. So that's what our buildings looked like on Wednesday, which was the first I could get out, and I think the first Jennifer could get out, and Bridget could get out.
Catherine, can't you see on that picture on the right-hand side, is that the water line right here?
Yes, yes, you can see the water line on the walls. And we all had boots on, because again, not only was there fecal matter, but there's also fish, no snakes. The bigger picture is in the library, water came halfway up the monitors in the library. So all the books are gone.
So if you want to know why it's going to take eight, or nine, or 10, or 12 months to get Kingwood back again, there's...
This is water still on the floor in the PAC building. The, one with the Coke machines is the, is the CLA building, that's close to where the network closet and the mass communication system. OTA, looking inside their lab is the other picture. So this is walking in by the dental hygiene clinic. This is the outside of that building where the water line came. This is the fieldhouse that's by the tennis court. The current of the river was so strong, it pushed the tennis balls and the soccer balls up in the rafters. Water line on our sign. This is the aftermath, getting everything out, out in central receiving, which had everything destroyed in it. So a lot of this is equipment from the HSB.
You can see the chillers back there, and then those are, Mike, what, is those the, what is that, transformers, generators back there? Pumps right there behind, kind of in front of the building, you can see the pipes coming out of the wall, and so the water was probably four feet there, maybe five feet, somewhere in that area.
They don't work anymore. Where the water line came on the vehicles that were in the central, that were in that area by the chillers, central receiving. Jennifer taking a picture of what our tennis courts looks like. This is right outside this, the CLA, CLB building. This is in the middle of our big quad. The water came up, over and up, and all this, these are goldfish and tadpoles that were just washed up in the middle of the, they were in the buildings as well. And then this building, actually, is my husband on the left, you can see the water line in the center of the small quad where we had the founder's fountain. So the water line is up to his elbow. And then you can see the, the tall grass behind him, the snails had crawled up to the highest point on the tall grass trying to survive the current. I mean, that's... Blackman Mooring is our remediation or mediation company, and I can't say enough good things about him. He was also there that Wednesday to walk the buildings with Jennifer and Bridget and Eddie, Eddie and myself and a few others. And I told the, the chief project director, John Mitchell, that he's the man that's going to save our college, so I had high expectations of him. And they've done a remarkable job. One of the companies they brought in are ART, which really is Art Recovery Technologies, because we have wonderful art all throughout the campus, but also faculty diplomas, there's certificates in the workforce programs, all those things hanging on the wall. So these are the folks that were meticulously removing them, cleaning them, and cataloging, cataloging them, and they're in storage now, but we'll get them back. Just some of the folks, dehumidifiers, essential, an army of workers, they're staging in, in parking lot C, which now have limited access, and literally between 100 and 250 workers in PPE, personal protective equipment, as I've learned from Bridget, with masks, booties on, gloves, everything, going in and cleaning out our facilities. And they told me in our meeting this morning that in 32 more days, they believe they will have completed the mediation process, and then we'll be ready to do reconstruction. So just workers in every building, and you can see the, the lines going for the pumps, pumped out water, pumping in dry air and chemicals. Just, every building has one or many pumps. Of course, we've all been displaced, so we started meeting the Friday before Labor Day at, well, the, the instructional folks started meeting at Mary Beth Stitt's kitchen, kitchen table, and then we went to the MCED building. MCED said, you have total use of our facilities, no charge. So that's been home base, except for a couple of days when they had a major event, back to school with the community, so we camped out at the Atascasita Center for those two days. So we've all been very mobile, and I can't say enough good things about all of my crew. This past weekend, the fencing started going up around all but two of the buildings and the parking lots by them. That fencing was critical, because we couldn't actually occupy those two buildings until we isolated all the contaminated buildings. So they are biohazard zones, we don't want anybody in there except folks with protective gear. And that means onlookers, and I've had amazingly enough, a few students just show up here and there, but we tell them, it's really a biohazard zone and not good for your health. We hope you're still, still enrolled, or stay enrolled. So some of the casualties that are coming out of the buildings, and they're all being, most of these are being trashed. You have to have a sense of humor.
That's a dummy, by the way, when you walk out there. Two dummies.
The first time I was able to bring all employees together was Thursday, six days ago, and the First Presbyterian Church of Kingwood graciously lent us their sanctuary, no charge, it'll, it'll, it could hold our 400-plus full-time employees. And we had over 400 people there. And so we're telling, you know, telling them what happened, because many of them had not been to the campus. I was in that white suit when later on I went by the, the cookers at the Kingwood Bible Church that were feeding all that, that 100 to 250 crews, day and night, food. And they were just doing this on their own. These are all Cajun cookers, they have, they're businessmen from mostly Lafayette and came in on their own. I freaked them out at first, because they thought I was from the health department in my white suit. But life goes on, so our fire science and our OTA programs have already started, so I snapped this picture yesterday morning at Atascasita. So this is what the instructional team has been doing. They've been converting, so before Harvey and what we're going to offer when we open up on the 25th with classes. So you can see how we're switching so many things to online and hybrid. And we're utilizing for the face-to-face and hybrid, the Atascasita Center, the MCED Center, the Student Conference Center, we're carving up all the big conference rooms and the classrooms, the Women's Center's a classroom, the Student Activity Center's a classroom, the Small Student Conference Area is for ESOL. So we've, we've gone through all that, and then we've been very fortunate to have two and find two wonderful community partners that are leasing a space really cheap. So the first is in a shopping center across the freeway from the college, and it's over 21,000 square feet, it's next to the Union Kitchen, the Levine's on that, they've just been fabulous. But I'm told it'll take me six weeks to be able to offer a class there by the time we go through quotes and City of Houston permitting. The other facility is smaller, and it is not in the City of Houston, it's in a physical therapy business, actually, one of our former employee's daughter and her husband own that business. And they've cut back a, a lot on their physical therapists with different healthcare regulations, so they're leasing us about 5,000 to 6,000 square feet for our dental hygiene, and we hope to actually fly in a whole dental hygiene clinic and set it up in that facility. So those are the, the things that we're gearing up for. We know that our students, we messaged our students, we expect students to come en masse on the 18th, when they see how their schedules have been changed from a 16-week to a 12-week. Our eight-week short courses are now six weeks, and we just expect them to be there in hordes or doing a lot on, online, starting on Monday. And we're gearing up for that. So I don't know what our enrollments will look like by the 25th, but we're doing everything we can to help students stay in school and meet their educational goals. Questions?
Well, I can't say enough good things about Catherine. Catherine just jumped in there, and the president jumped in and helped, the vice chancellors have helped, Alicia and Amos and...
They have all been wonderful.
Jennifer, they've all helped, and, um...
Don't ask me where all my faculty are, I'll know sometime, but I know some are camped out at our sister colleges, their faculty have just been wonderful, providing us another home for them. They've taken in our programs, North Harris has our nursing and our respiratory, our... It's harder for the colleges that are farther away, because so many of our students have transportation issues. So that's why we're trying to keep things as close to Lone Star College-Kingwood service area as possible.
I don't think Anthony's talking tonight, but we couldn't do this without the faculty and the staff over there. I know the administrators are, you know, they're, they're there, but when, when we were over there at MCED, morale's high, probably because they get to wear blue jeans for a change. And, you know, I, I just am, it just couldn't happen without the leadership over there and the employees all chipping in and trying to do the right thing here, I think.
I've got great vice presidents, great deans, great department chairs, staff throughout, so, you know, we're, we're rising to the challenge.
I think the message we're trying to give for students is, things are going to happen in your life, you just need to deal with it. If, if this is the worst thing that ever happens to you, you're probably going to have a good life. So we want students to stay in school and stick with this, and don't drop out. We've got these other opportunities, if you can't make it right now, you can come back in September, even October, you can come back and take classes, and don't give up here, so.
Yeah. I have a question. So some students are being served at sister colleges, faculty members are being housed and other, are we taking a second look at the budget allocations for this academic year to help relieve any budgetary strain that puts on those host colleges?
I think they'll bill us in terms of supplies and equipment, especially for some of the sciences, and that's very fair, because, you know, we built that into our budget, so...
Well, Jennifer's going to talk about this, but Catherine, whatever Catherine needs to get going, she's going to get. Every time I see her, she's asking for another $250,000 or $300,000. Why don't you just put all that together and tell us what we need? But we're going to, we have the funds, we have the, I mean, I told the group when I was over there, I mean, you know, okay, the bad news is, you've got a lot of damage, the good news is, you're going to have an almost completely new campus, you're 60% of your 60% of your campus is going to be remodeled and nice and fresh and shiny. So, we, I mean, the great thing about working at Lone Star is, we have the resources to do this. We can recoup from this between, and again, she's going to talk about insurance and how we fund some of this, but, so, not exactly, but she gets everything that she needs to get up and running. She's not going to be harmed.
I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of all the impacts, you know, because of course, the sister colleges are going to step up. But if stepping up puts a strain on their budget, don't want to take anything away from you. Maybe there's some shuffling around we can do to help relieve that.
As a side note, I want to say hats off to Jennifer Olenek and John Guest and Robert Barrera and Dr. Head, because I've never known of a lease contract to get done in less than 24 hours, and it happened. It happened. Thank you.
What's the student count at this point compared to...
Amazingly enough, our head count is up 5%, so we have over 12,860 students.
I tell you, that's why I don't go to Las Vegas. I would have lost. I thought the student count would go down as a result of the trauma.
You know, we don't know if they really, we had done a lot to make sure that most had paid in that first purge, so we were sitting good before the storm hit. And so, I don't know how many have been so traumatized that they're dealing with all of those issues in their own personal life and they're not thinking about it yet, and maybe not even the 25th. We'll find out.
Is the City of Houston not willing to make concessions on that six weeks?
That is for Robert and Jennifer and others, and if I need to go beg, I will. But I, we do have a good relation with our local city council, and so if there are any roadblocks, then I won't hesitate to use that contact. Thank you.
Jennifer, do you want to come in and give an financial overview? So, Jennifer's been out at the colleges, and Robert Barrera back there, and I mentioned Mike Fiori already, but they were on this early on, trying to get people out there, make sure that we expedited all the work that needed to be done. So, Blackman-Mooring was out there, when'd they first show up?
Wednesday afternoon.
Right, right immediately, like the...
Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday was the first day that the college even became accessible, that anyone could get to it. And that afternoon, when we went out there, Blackman-Mooring met us out there to walk the grounds. And Thursday, Friday, so Wednesday night, I signed the work authorization for Blackman-Mooring, and Thursday, Friday, they literally descended on the campus to begin the remediation.
Something we didn't talk about with Kingwood. So, the classes start the 25th, and normally, the adjuncts would be paid on the 15th. So, we've, what we're going to do is give the adjuncts that start on the 25th, basically two paychecks. And then we'll get on a regular cycle after that to try to help everybody and get them on a regular cycle. We're trying to, not only the students, but the employees also. So, we're trying to help as many people as we can as quickly as we can. I don't know whether you knew that or not, but you can, you might want to tell everybody, not now, but you can tell your own faculty and your own adjuncts what we're trying to do, so, okay.
Yes, just to go through, just sort of the run-through of the facility conditions. You've definitely, obviously, heard very clearly what happened out at Kingwood. I personally have been out there twice, the first time, as you've heard, with Blackman-Mooring to get the remediation going immediately. And then last week, we were out there again with the insurance adjuster. So, me and several other facilities folks have walked those grounds a few times now. So, that's Kingwood. I do want to run through some of the other campuses and the damage they've received. Cyfair did get hit with some tornado damage. Thankfully, it was not as direct as it might have been, but there is some damage that we're dealing with there, roof damage and such from a tornado that touched down. Pretty much every campus has some amount of leaking that occurred through the roofs. I mean, just the sheer amount of water hitting these roofs, even a roof in good condition had some amount of leaking. So, we see some, you know, ceiling tiles with some water damage in virtually most buildings. Montgomery, same thing, minor roof leaks occurred there. North Harris also had some minor roof leaks, some wet ceiling tiles, some wet carpet, minor amounts. Tomball College did have, we had a construction firm out there laying the new south entrance. Part of the blacktop there, the dirt underneath got washed away, so part of that new entrance collapsed. But very quickly, that construction firm laser got out there, and it's already been restored. So, there was some damage there that's been fixed, and some minor roof leaks there as well. University Park, again, like I said, minor roof leaks, that's a recurring theme throughout this, is minor roof leaks. University Park, the most significant thing, though, is the Science and Innovation Building that was under construction. It was set to be substantially complete in October. I think it was up in one of those photos, that building did flood. So, EE Read is a construction firm there. They're already out there. When we walked it yesterday, they had already cut a lot of that sheet rock out that had gotten wet. But, so that did receive some amount of damage at University Park, and also the Conference Center parking garage flooded. We had to get some pumps to pump out the water there. And System Office Woodlands here, here, just some minor roof leaks. So, with that damage on our, right now, we are estimating the total cost of all of this damage to be between 25 and 30 million. The bulk of that certainly is Kingwood at probably about 15 million at Kingwood to do between the remediation and then the reconstruction. We're looking at about, so within that 25 to 30 million, probably about 21 million is just in building damage, and another 5 to 7 million perhaps in replacement of hardware, particularly technology, hardware, furniture, those types of items. So, in our insurance, we have two, actually, three primary forms of insurance. The first is the flood insurance. That has a $100,000 deductible, which, of course, we will pay, but that one also has a max payout of $10 million. Liberty Mutual, they're the insurance provider there, that they're who I walked Kingwood with. It was pretty clear that we were above that $10 million mark, so they're going to be, I'm expecting to get those funds from them relatively quickly, the $10 million from the insurance. On wind damage, that is still being evaluated. Facilities are still being walked with the insurance adjuster. Again, Liberty Mutual on the wind damage, that is a separate form of coverage. So, there, the challenge that we'll have there is there is a 2% deductible, 2% of the value of the building. So, while we do have various minor roof leaks, all of those things that probably qualify as wind damage, what we're going to have to continue to assess is whether the cost of that damage exceeds the 2% deductible. If it doesn't, of course, that will not be covered by insurance. That'll be on us, and as we continue to work with Liberty Mutual to determine if there is any damage above that 2% amount. So, that's the insurance. Oh, the third form of insurance that I mentioned too was primarily for the Science and Innovation Building. If it's not yet substantially complete, those buildings are not yet on our Liberty Mutual policy. So, those buildings, we have separate insurance for projects under construction, under our OSIP, its owner's insurance policy, that we have on construction projects. So, we will have a third entity, third insurance firm that we have to work through there to try to see what we can get covered on that Science Building primarily. So, after that, where I'm going to hope to get funds next is from FEMA Public Assistance. We've already filed the initial paperwork that gets us in line to begin the process with FEMA. Typically, depending on the damage, they will reimburse some percentage of your costs. I am working on getting a consultant on board to help us through that process. It is a very detailed and lengthy process, and there's a lot of federal regulations you have to follow to be eligible for the reimbursement. So, I hope to have someone, you know, here to help us out very shortly. But there, I hope to get some FEMA reimbursement to cover a lot of the remaining costs. I will note there, though, that however, it takes, it tends to take a significant amount of time. I'm going to say at least a year or two, if not longer, to receive some of those reimbursements. Like I said, I made sure I filed the paperwork that gets our place in line. I don't actually know what our queue place is, though. Right, of course, they're going to be dealing with City of Houston, HISD, all other public entities who will be applying for public assistance. So, we will be in line with the rest of them, completing all that paperwork. So, in the meantime, what we are doing is all expenses related, specific to the hurricane, all expenses specific are being booked, and we've created a separate grant-type fund, where all these expenses are being booked. That way, we can track everything in that fund, first cover those expenses with the insurance funds, and then after that, we are going to be using bond funds to cover capitalizable items, which will be the bulk of this. And then hopefully, we can reimburse those bond funds as hopefully later on FEMA reimbursement funds come in, any balance. So, there will come a point in a year or two from now, as we've received the bulk of FEMA assistance, where we are going to have to do a reconciliation of that fund to determine what ultimately was not covered by either insurance or FEMA Public Assistance. And at that time, we can determine if it's a capital item, we can pay for bond funds. If it's not a capital item, then we will most likely need to use reserves to pay for those items. So, that is, let me make sure I covered and already gone into length about what our follow-up plans are for Kingwood. A lot of those lease expenses additionally can be reimbursed oftentimes as well, so we're going to include all of that in our accounting of what the cost of the storm is for Lone Star College. And of course, that 25 to 30 million dollar cost that I just mentioned does not include some of these additional expenses ahead of us leasing this space, for example. You know, that 25 to 30 million dollar cost is primarily the actual damages to our facilities. It's not yet including the additional operational costs that we're going to experience primarily at Kingwood. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
We're in good shape, though, relatively speaking. Financially, we've already been spending, we've already spent time talking about this. Jennifer and I talked yesterday about reviewing our insurance policy. I'm not sure how long that policy's been in effect, but you would think $10 million would cover a lot of things, but we've grown so much in the last couple of years that we need to review that again. And if we need to get a higher deductible than our payout, then we might be taking a look at that. So, there's a lot of work that goes into this, but, I mean, the good thing is, we're in great shape financially, so we've got bond money, so we can handle this, and then get back either through insurance or FEMA, whatever we can, and then move on here. Our goal is to make Kingwood whole just as quickly as we can, and University Park, the facility over there, and everybody else, so, just going to take a while. Kingwood is going to take a while for us to do all that, so.
I have a question. We have, instead of an individual policy on each campus, we just have one single policy?
Yes, one single policy system-wide.
I know that in my, in my business, I've had to have these experiences where we have interruptions in business.
Lost business income?
Right. And so, there's, as well as cost of alternate space, that kind of thing, we're covered partially by the insurance. Did we have that?
Yeah, so, that would be included. So, in the flood part, yes, that's included, but we've already hit the $10 million max payout.
That comes under that portion?
Yes, because it's, it's part of the reason what caused the damage. So, because it's from flood, it's part of the flood policy. So, had the cost of the damages themselves been, say, five or six million, and lost business income was another million, yes, we could have argued for including that million in the insurance payout. So, yes, that can be included, but like I said, in that case, for the flood, we're over the 10 million, so what you want to say is included in the 10 million is fungible at this point.
I have a question or, and a comment, I think. Thank you and everybody else for the hard work that you have done, and will continue to do to get our buildings and facilities back to where they were before. I know early on, you were working up a plan to increase the amount we had on reserves and et cetera. And it's my idea, while I'm thinking, and I think it's the right thing, that we will not, probably not be able to reach the reserve level that we wanted to reach as quickly as we thought, you know, as a result of this catastrophe that we just settled. Is that a fair statement?
I would like to take the time to look at it. I mean, we are still working at the same time as all of this. We are working through our year-end closeout. I'll give my financial report later this evening. And we were already planning, now that the budget cycle is over, to look again at the five-year plan, and we're definitely going to update all of that and include the impact of the storm in there. That way, we can all discuss where we might want those goals to be.
We've been talking about this, so, once we see exactly what the 4% increase is, we're not going to be able to tell for a while, because if we do have a 4% increase, that means we picked up $1.4 million more than we anticipated. We had money, we always put contingency money in the budget. Some of the operating costs at Kingwood are actually going to be repurposed, so your payroll may not be fully the same as it was. So, we know we may, we may or may not have money over there to reallocate. So, maybe, we were trying to get up to 17%?
16% by the end of FY '18.
But we were pushing, we were going to be close to 16 coming into the year, and so we're just taking a look at that and see. We were in, we were in, we thought we were going to end up in better financial shape, and I still think we are, than what we originally thought. So, we were going to be pushing 16% at the end of this year, which is where we wanted to be. We were going to be really close. And then we were trying to add, what, 7 million into the reserves for next year. So, to answer your question, we may have to pull some money out of there, but we're not sure yet, because between the insurance, it's the timing of when you open and how much money, and because of the utility costs and some other things that are going to be factoring into what we're, what we're actually doing with the facility. So, we'll see. I mean, if we, if we need to take money out of the reserves, we'll do it, but that's kind of the last, that's our last choice, so.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and what may occur too, especially since the FEMA reimbursements can take such a lengthy amount of time, is yes, you may see that hit the reserves in the first year or two, because of course, we have to pay it out first, but as we begin to see some of that FEMA money hopefully come in, then we can see sort of that come back up in probably about two years or so for that. So, you might see that kind of swing, because we'll manage it from a cash flow perspective in that sense.
I understand, thank you.
Or the other colleges could just agree to give up money and give it all to Kingwood, and then that way, they would...
I don't see anybody shaking.
I'm not sure how they reacted to that. No, no hands jumped up?
No, I didn't see any, yeah.
Well, part of our planning in our five-year plan is, we, we actually assume some worst-case scenarios. We knew that assessed value might drop. We knew that, we had been talking, I was actually concerned, my bigger concern, I mean, yes, it was the damage, but if we lost students, we were going to lose millions of dollars upfront this year, and then have to go into the reserve. So, it turns out, I don't think we're going to have to do that. I don't, we'll see what happens with Kingwood, but so far, so good. So, that's the reason we've been spending so much time on the finance, making sure that we stay in good shape, and if things don't go right, then we can deal with it, so.
And we probably should be prepared next year to certainly see an impact on the appraised values for the property taxes.
Yes. I was on a conference call yesterday with other Gulf Coast colleges and some state officials. There's some talk about asking the state for, to make, to set aside some of the funds. I don't, I don't think it's going to happen, because I don't know where you draw the line in this. So, you're going to give aid to ISDs, to any, the City of Houston, counties, I don't know where, I don't know how community colleges would fit into this. In the discussions yesterday, if I totaled the nine or 10 other Gulf Coast colleges, there was about $3 million worth of damage, about 3 million total. And then we got to us, and I was one of the last ones to talk, and I said, "We're around 30." So, we had about 10 times as much as everybody else put together. And then all of a sudden, this talk of, "Well, maybe the state can help us," went away. All of a sudden, they were very quiet. I'm going, "Yeah, I'd be glad for the state to help us. I'm not counting on that." So, and I don't think that's...
The state did reach out to us and ask for a spreadsheet estimating our costs, so that was really when we built this 25 to 30 million dollar number. In the course of 48 hours, my team put together those cost estimates, so we could get them submitted to the state.
The earliest they would probably do anything is in the next session, which is what happened in Hurricane Ike, when they came back, and put some money aside for people that could show that they had been damaged, which in our case would not be until 2019. So, I, but I always think we need to take care of ourselves first, and then if somebody else wants to help us, that's fine, but we always need to be prepared. else wants to help us, that's fine, but we always need to be prepared to, we just need to take care of our business, so, which we have, so.
Anything else, board members?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We've all been quite busy the last couple of weeks, as you can probably tell.
I understand. Okay. All right. Again, on our, okay, I got you, yeah. But before the faculty senate presidents come up, I want to thank all of the presidents, staff, volunteers, and et cetera for all of the work that they've done. And you have gone, using a Smithology term, you have gone over and beyond as far as your duties and responsibilities. And thank you, and, and we're so happy to have all of you working for this great institution. Five for Senate.
Before I begin, I'd like to echo those sentiments. I think it was before the flood, before the hurricane, that we received an email from Dr. Head saying that the Chronicle of Higher Education had named us again as a great place to work for. In the day-to-day affairs, sometimes things go well, and sometimes they don't always go so well, but we really did see the best of this college in the last few weeks. So, I'm Professor Bob Lynch, and I'd like to thank the trustees and Chairman Smith and Chancellor Head for this opportunity that we get at every meeting to speak to you. I thought about, you know, kind of not talking about this stuff, because we all are concerned about the hurricane recovery, but this is really good news and a milestone that I wanted to be sure to address. The college itself began, I think, 40, was it 44 years ago? And we were, you know, I'm told by the seniors, you know, that we were a few faculty teaching out of high schools in the area. And then, we began to grow and built our buildings over at North Harris. And as we grew, the need for a more organized way of dialogue between faculty and administration grew. So, we began with the faculty senate, and we're, we're at this milestone of 40 years old. So, I wanted to talk about this entity that really no single person knows about completely. And it started probably before anybody in this room started here at North Harris, rather, Lone Star College. So, let's, if you, if you bear with me, did I touch the wrong button again? If you bear with me, the academic side for a little bit, our country started based on the idea of representative democracy, and so, we carry that on into our organization here. Abraham Lincoln called it government for the people by the people in his famous address. And President Woodrow Wilson talked about self-determination being critical to any kind of action. I just talked about how the college began in '73, and then, within four years, we had started our faculty senate. It's built into the policy of the board. That's how important that we believe it to be. These were three passages I found in our policy. Even under HR, it talks about fostering shared governance. It mentions the importance in the board meeting procedures. And it talks about participatory governance. These are what we're trying to do. The faculty senate at North Harris began as a means to provide greater input to administration for really two purposes, the faculty needs, which are closely tied to the instructional needs. And this ended up serving as a framework for the faculty senates at other locations in the college. And they each made it their own, based on the needs they had. Our constitution at North Harris says this as the purpose for our existence. You'll see, education is still there, the primary goal being the needs of the faculty for the purpose of instruction. And I've highlighted here the parts pertinent to tonight. One is this better understanding and better communication between us, the faculty, and you, the administrators, the trustees. I wanted to talk a little bit about how we are organized at North Harris, and again, it is different, depending on which of the six main colleges you're talking about. But in our case, we recently changed our membership to add the grant program-funded faculty, which were left out for a number of years. So, really, all faculty now are members for us, and the full-timers have that ability to vote. A full faculty meet twice a year, the whole faculty body, it's optional, but we get quite a few people, the first week back in the fall and the first week back in January. Every two years, we elect officers, and those officers, with representatives from all the various departments, form the executive board. And that executive board meets on the other months of the year, except when we have the final exams and throughout the summer. But I wanted to remind everybody that dozens and dozens and dozens, no exaggeration, dozens of faculty serve on committees throughout the campus and the system. As an example, our awards committee alone had about 65 people on it, I know as of last year. And the reason why is because we evaluate candidates for awards and have to go observe them at various places and times, and we need a number of faculty to be available at those times to go observe the candidates for these offices, for these awards. Just some of the common things that we do is, we welcome the new faculty. We screen those award candidates I mentioned. We also provide student emergency funding year-round. Now, this comes from donations. It used to literally be a pass-the-hat kind of thing, and we would sell used books from the library, but it was faculty donations. And then, as you may remember, in our great recession, our enrollment just, just increased, and we couldn't keep up. So, Dr. Head, as our president, kindly used some discretionary funds, set up an account for us with Foundation. And through the Foundation now, we're able to dispense those funds more readily and provide a place for donors to get a tax deductible credit, whereas, when they were passing the hat, they weren't able to benefit from that. But that was an informal committee, and we made that formal now. So, that is something that we've always been doing, but now, going through the Foundation, we've made it a formal part of our faculty senate. We also have professional development funds. We used to be the, one of the big providers of professional development for our faculty, but we were making them jump through two hoops, really. We were having them apply to their divisions and then apply to us, and we asked for those funds to go primarily back to the division last year. We keep some of those funds for supplemental funding if faculty get invited to speak at a conference somewhere, and we, we are there for them for that. We also, of course, provide information between faculty and administration. Faculty come to us all the time with concerns, concerns they feel they can't address through the normal chain of command, or they don't know who to talk to, and so, we are always receiving them in our office or getting emails. And, and then, as a, as a body, we contribute to the possible solutions out there to improve what we do. We cover quite a variety of things. It's really a kind of a unique position, in the sense that we deal with all levels and across the system. This is just a selection of some of the things that we've dealt with as faculty senate presidents at the system level, but also some of the other things that we've dealt with at the North Harris campus level. Now, the benefits of having a faculty senate are, of course, to identify what could be improved. We, we hear it from everybody. We provide that input to the administration. And by working out possible solutions, we can warn the faculty that this is coming. It might be received better that way. We can encapsulate it into faculty terms, so it hits them at home. We are able to take questions from them and then counsel them as to how they might approach particular issues that come up. And we are the liaison. We, this is what we do. We're the liaison for the administrators and the faculty. There are a number of challenges to this job. There is no staff for faculty staff, for faculty senate. We have very pinpointed jobs, and folks do those things. There's no manual on how to do it. That would be an ideal situation, to be able to create a manual for us at our campus. Every time we pass the, pass the baton, every time we take office, we have to figure out how to do things all over again. It's like grad school in the sense that you, you really can't do anything else, you know? You have to tell your friends, "Can't go to a movie tonight, got this, got that," and sometimes working on the weekends. And often, we get caught in the middle, whereas faculty can normally keep their head down, you know, they do their office hours, they teach their students, they go home. We, we end up being seen sometimes as an administrator in one sense, and then, on the other side, you know, we can't please everyone in our faculty. We can't even schedule meetings that they all can attend, because everybody's scattered and at different hours and times. One of the administrators said to me, "Welcome to my world. Can't please everybody." Did I give you that quote? It could have come from a lot of you guys. But Dr. Head, I've got you on the next slide here. We have evolved, and I do want to thank you, because I've been involved, I've been at Lone Star probably for a quarter of the time that faculty senate has been around. And I think that we are at the best we've ever been when it comes to faculty senate involvement and inclusion in the system. So, if you're thinking about how you can make a difference, this is one of them. This is, this would be a part of the trustees' legacy and the chancellor's legacy, to have faculty to be so included in what goes on. So, I don't know if anybody's ever thought of it that way, but the faculty senate, this beast that keeps going on throughout the year, is really helping to shape the successes here. And so, the 40th anniversary really is a celebration. I mean, we did have a celebration at our first meeting back August 21st. It was so big, it actually created the shadow on the moon, or was it the sun? We created the shadow on the sun. That was the day of the solar eclipse. We made it special. We were fortunate to have the Lone Star College Police Honor Guard come in. We were the, when I found out about it, we were the first to, to get on their schedule. After they first presented, we were number two, and then, summer came and other people got them. But we're really proud that we did get them. They opened up our, our celebration in a very fine way. We had decorations that we normally wouldn't have, we had a special cake. And administrators did the usual, they joined us to help present the awards and to welcome our new faculty members. We had speakers, we always have speakers from the community, we have speakers from Lone Star College programs, and, and then I addressed them about the significance of our anniversary. Here are a few pictures. Here's the color guard. We had three out of the six that usually are available and looking sharp up there. We typically get 85 to 100 people for these first meetings back, and we provide them a meal in August and in January. One of the traditions at North Harris is that we welcome our new faculty with the Yellow Rose of Texas. Here are some of the officers. You've got Brandy Ford on the left, Diana Cooley on the right, and there's our cake. I'll tell you, it's got to be difficult for folks to be handwriting and frosting. What a challenge. But it does say there, "Congratulations, faculty senate, 40 years of shared governance." Now, the challenge here going forward is to safeguard our faculty senate. The temptation, of course, for any kind of decision-making is that it's easier to do without involving a lot of people. I was fortunate to, to accept Dr. Head's offer to go to the Association of American Community Colleges Conference, learn the other side, get some professional development. And of course, I'm walking around with a name tag that says "faculty." I felt like I was in the lion's den with all the administrators. But we really did get to talk, and there was a president at another college. And he said, "Oh, you know, yeah, we got a faculty senate president. Oh, man, I just don't listen to him." And, and I thought, "Wow, that's terrible, especially since you're wearing your ID." And I could see who he was and where he was from. He said, "You know, the way we're set up, I report directly to the board," he said. "And when that faculty senate president can fire me, then I will listen to what he has to say." And I thought, "Oh, my goodness, that's, that's sad," you know? And, you know, I started kind of out with a history lesson here, talking about Presidents Lincoln and Wilson. And I also remember, it was the Stamp Act in 1765 that really created our country. It was taxation without representation. And the cry was, "Taxation without representation is tyranny." And man, that president at his college, it sure sounded like tyranny to me. Now, we don't have that here, and thank goodness, we don't have that here. You know, in relationships, you often hear, you know, "You can't live with them, you can't live without them," you know? It's really that you can't live without faculty senate. I hope you guys continue to realize the importance of it and, and continue to support us. One of those ways to support us is to continue to avoid major decisions over the summer when we're not here, and we've been good about that. Some other things are, you know, administration on our campuses should really avoid scheduling other meetings at the same time as regular faculty senate meeting times. And, you know, going forward, I think one of the biggest things that I know I would like to improve at North Harris is more faculty senate dialogue with some of our other elected bodies, the staffers and the student governors, the student government. So, the PSSA and SGA, they are also elected bodies, and it would be nice if somehow we could include more of their feedback. Now, we saw some student activism in the last couple of meetings of the spring, and that was wonderful, because that's what we teach them, civic engagement, and they were actually practicing that. I, I'm about to finish up, and I appreciate your attention during this, this time, but, you know, I was shocked to find out, you know, by some folks who are administrators now, that they were involved in faculty senate at one point in their lives. And I know Jason LaPray was faculty senate president at North Harris, he's now a dean at UP. Linda Head, vice chancellor, she said she was faculty senate president when she, as secretary when she was at Tom Ball. And so, I'm just kind of curious, with everybody here in the room, if, if you would please stand, if you've been somehow a representative for faculty senate, would you please stand and be recognized for your involvement? I know there are some in the crowd here. If you've been involved with faculty senate, please, please stand. I'd also like to recognize my counterparts here. Please, faculty senate presidents from the other colleges, would you please stand? This is our first meeting back. These folks will be rotating up here at the, at the lectern as well. And I wanted to introduce you to some of my officers. Would you please come up? We talked about how this hurricane recovery couldn't happen without a lot of people involved. Faculty senate could not happen with a lot of people, without a lot of people involved. Faculty Senate could not happen without a lot of people involved. These are just a few. These are just a few of the officers. There are five officers. And we have Brandy Ford here, our secretary. She is working at the Greens Point and Victory Centers. Janice Hartgrove-Freeho has been involved with Faculty Senate for quite a long time. She is our Chair for the Awards Committee. Diana Cooley is Vice President. You may have seen her filling in for me here and at some meetings at the President's Council. And all three of these also have been part of that hurricane recovery in one way or another. Brandy actually was helping to sort our stores of clothing. And Janice, I know, was involved early in the week at our shelter. Diana was one of the first people to ask, "How can I donate?" So I'm very lucky to have these folks working with me. Up here, you'll see Deborah Harper-LeBlanc, second from the left. She has left Lone Star for an administrative position, and we wish her well. We also have this new committee I talked about. We formalized the Student Emergency Committee, and Aaron Ranth has volunteered to be Chair until our next elections in the spring. So thank you very much for your support, and we hope we can count on that as we go forward.
Professor Lynch?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I have two questions for you, okay? Sounds like as a Faculty Senate President, you're kept very busy. Do you receive release time?
Yes, half of our workload is dedicated to teaching, and half of our workload is dedicated to the job. Now, as you know, even in your position, it really never stops. There's never enough time to get it all done, but we just keep the ball rolling.
Right. How many faculty are there at North Harris?
We have roughly 500.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that each Faculty Senate has their own constitution. Are they so different that they couldn't be, that couldn't be a commonality between all of the Faculty Senates?
You know, I haven't seen all but a couple of ours. I was told by previous Presidents that that had been looked at, and at that time at least, they wanted to really keep their personality, keep their uniqueness, because there are some things that are just simply the way the faculty decided they would prefer to have the procedure. And that includes things like the way our officers are elected. At North Harris, we do the same slate of officers every two years, the same positions every two years. Different people can run. But at other places, they might, I think you guys elect like a President-elect, or the VP is going to be standing in and then take over as President the next year. So I understand there are some procedural differences like that.
We've talked about it on and off, but it would be the faculty, if they all wanted to have the same one, they would. But if you would poll them right now and ask them if they wanted the same one, the answer would be no, I'm sure. Yeah, I can already see that. I already know the looks on them. Well, what happens is, you're right, each college has a different way of doing it. Now, the issue is what they do is, they talk, and I meet with them monthly. I have lunch with them tomorrow. We have a laundry list of issues to talk about, but it, I mean, ultimately, the issue, most of the issues we're talking about are pretty common across all of the colleges. That's what I'm interested in. If it's an individual, if you've got some issue with North Harris, then I want you to deal with the President over there. If it's something that crosses boundaries and it impacts Cyfair or Kingwood or one of the other colleges, then, and it could be everything from some of the issues you've been talking about, like emergency funds or registration. Or let me give you some good examples, because I have them on the agenda for tomorrow. It could be like online faculty, or digital books, or student success, or faculty evaluations, and how we want to handle that. So, because we need to be consistent with that, so. And so it's really up to them. If they want the same ones, fine. If they don't want the same ones, fine. But everybody does it a little differently, so.
We are such a diverse geography here. We are quite spread out over the northern part of town, and each of our areas, each of our communities have different demographics. And I think that that necessitates the need on some things to have our own unique way of doing it in our part of town. You know, and for the same reason, you won't get 100% agreement amongst the six Faculty Senate Presidents either. All of the faculty bodies have different concerns that they're bringing forward.
We don't, we don't get 100% agreement even among the college Presidents. But we talk about things, and that's the way we, I mean, when you're in a big system like this, you kind of try to reach consensus and make the decisions broad enough so that everybody feels like there's some benefit to them, so.
And, you know, I want to mention also that I think that there is a tendency sometimes in our society to think majority rules. And I don't lead that way, at least with our Faculty Senate. The minority has an opinion that matters too, and they are our faculty as well. And so I try to pay attention to not only what most of them want, but also pay attention to what some of them need, and try to make everybody happy as much as we can.
They're pretty open for the Board. All you have to do is talk with them for a little while. They're pretty outspoken. They don't hesitate to let you know where they stand over issues. And when we meet, and they have direct access to me, I mean, they have access to their Presidents, but even at our level, they either communicate with Helen Clarity or me directly or, and when we meet and talk, I mean, I'm really clear that we can't do very much. If they're going to be opposed to it, then that's, that's not going to work. So, but a lot of issues we need to deal with. The book issue is one, and how to address students, 40% of our students not having a book, that, we can't make progress on that without the Faculty Senate. So we need help over that. And I don't have the solutions for all that, but it's a good system. I think it works. I just need to clarify one thing. So you said, when you started your speech off, we won that award, and you said, "Not every day is a great day here." Is that what I heard you say?
I didn't, I don't think I said it that way. I said, "Every day, we deal with the tricky elements of person-to-person..."
Got it, okay.
"...interaction."
That was a trick question.
But at the end of the day, we are a great place to work for.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. You've done a very good job, and appreciate your comments.
Well, thank you. Again, I know that we are concerned about hurricane recovery. But this is a milestone, and I thought it was a chance for all of us to learn a little bit about it, because none of us know everything about this unique animal.
Thanks, Paul. Correct. Thank you very much. Okay, Board members. At this particular point in time, I'd like to hear you all talk about any meetings or conferences that you've attended over the last month that you think would be worthy of the entire body hearing about it. Dr. Trowbridge?
The night's long, so I'm going to be very quick. I want to have, I want to give you good news, and then I want to give you bad news. I don't know, several months ago, LeAnn Nutt gave a talk, I think in an AA-ACC meeting, and was approached by a pretty good publisher, I know who the publisher is outside of DC, asking if she might be interested in writing a book on the Grit program. That's the true Grit program that John Wayne was in. Anyway, she consented to this, or at least wanting to do it. When I found out about it, I asked her, "Would you like to co-author the book with me?" And I asked her that because she's bright, she's very articulate, she writes very well, and as an English professor, I see stuff like that. So I thought, "This is a safe bet." Anyway, we're going to proceed on this. Now, I mentioned this to you for this reason only. She's going to write about grit. She's going to write the hard part. I want to write about success stories for students. I'm really taken by that, about poor kids who begin with heartrending situations, and then it becomes heartwarming. And so I just want to tell you, Presidents over there, I am really going to bug you for stories. I'm going to call and write you and harass you, because I want you to get into the bowels of your system and ask for stories. And I'll start it once the flood thing is, but not far from now, I'm going to really bug you and say, "Give me those stories. They're out there, and there are a lot of them, and they're absolutely wonderful." Now, for the critical part, and I have a statement, it's not very long. The Board of Trustees deliberately and explicitly chose to have the administration, not the Board, adjudicate grievance appeals, with the Board hearing a grievance appeal only if the administration violated Board policy through procedural irregularities. This year, three cases alleging procedural irregularities have arisen, but in each case, procedural irregularities and violation of Board policy have not been found. Yet, the legal cost to the college for these three cases that went nowhere totaled roughly That sum, therefore, has been virtually wasted. That sum could have been spent instead on other worthwhile projects. Since August 2014, the college's administration's bills for AFT negotiations have totaled $968,593.96. Three years, almost $1 million in negotiations with the union. This amount would provide tuition and books for 400 students for two semesters. There is something wrong with this picture. The Board should not, and the public will not, take kindly to the virtual waste of huge funds. At the end of this Board meeting, when the Chairman calls for Ida Genus for the next Board meeting, I would like to add the motion to stopping all employee appeals at the Chancellor level. I think we ought to discuss that. I think we ought to debate it. I think we ought to be out and open about it, but it is problematic, and we're spending a ton of money on this stuff, and I think we ought to look at that. I want to finish with these considerations. If you let all this be determined finally by Steve Head, that is fine by me. Steve Head is an outstanding Chancellor. I work with him virtually every day. He is brilliant, he is fair, and he's moral. Second point, the Board's charge by state law is to set policy, not to act as administrators. And when we begin to negotiate appeals, we become administrators rather than policymakers. Third point, having the Board resolve grievance appeals potentially encourages politics. And now we can avoid that. And finally, given all the money that we're spending on this, just now, we have Harvey's expenses to deal with. So this is a matter I want to talk about. I want to talk about in public. I want to debate, because it is a problem.
Dr. Trowbridge, what I will do at the, later on, on the agenda, is a spot for future agenda items, and I'm going to talk about that at that particular time, or you can add that at that particular time.
You're going to do it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's the, that's the last agenda item, and I will have some words on that at that particular time. Thank you. Okay, any other Board members?
Yes, I want to thank Dr. Head for responding. Aviation Alliance Company called me and said they had 40 openings. And I said, "And would I give this information to Lone Star?" I said, "Only in case you hire some of the kids." And I need to know if they hired anybody. Let me know.
Okay. All right. Well, Dr. Head is responsive, isn't he?
Yes, he's, they were, they were real impressed.
I put you on the spot, but okay, yeah, thank you. All right. Anybody else? Any meetings or activities that you would like to, the entire Board, to hear about? Okay, if not, Helen, do we have any citizens' participation requests?
Good evening, everyone. I am John Bergduff, representing the American Federation of Teachers. It is my privilege to speak to you most months on behalf of the members of our local about issues they believe are important to their well-being as employees and to the success of our students. Although our point of view may differ from that of the administration from time to time, where we stand firmly united is in our commitment to make Lone Star College the best college that it can possibly be. Rarely are our priorities more closely aligned than in our commitment to helping our college through the difficult challenges it faces in the wake of Hurricane Harvey. We in the AFT want to especially commend the response of Lone Star College on behalf of our employees, students, and the greater community. Our administration responded quickly to open our campuses as shelters and staging grounds for first responders. Our Chancellor and college Presidents reached out to us by email with messages of support and hope. They have promised flexibility for both students and employees who are going to have difficulty getting the semester started. Plans are underway to bring counseling resources to the campuses for those who need it. Our Office of Human Resources sent us resources for recovery to help with the psychological challenges. All of the colleges made arrangements for childcare for employees while the public schools are closed, with the costs reimbursed by the college. As has already been noted, $700,000 has been set aside from the Lone Star College Foundation and the Chancellor's discretionary fund to provide direct aid to full-time employees and students. We cannot say enough good things about what the college has done. AFT Lone Star College has also been involved. Like everyone else, our members have volunteered time and effort to meet the needs of those affected, but also working closely with our state affiliate, Texas AFT, and our national union, the American Federation of Teachers. An emergency fund was started to collect donations nationwide for union members in need of immediate assistance. Although insurance and FEMA checks will be coming for many employees, there's often an immediate need for cash right away. Our goal was to turn around funds rapidly, and the first checks were out the door within a day of the storm. In addition to donations from members nationwide, our locals set aside funds from our operating budget to be available to respond quickly. These funds were made available for staff and faculty, both full-time and part-time. Although this emergency fundraising effort through the AFT is nearly complete, we continue to be involved. The Lone Star College Foundation is collecting donations from their website, from individuals, and we are inviting our members and other employees who are able to do so to make contributions through the foundation. As the devastation from Harvey continues to unfold, we need to be especially vigilant to the needs of those least able to afford the losses they are incurring. Among our employees, those would include our adjunct faculty and part-time staff. The funds originally set aside by the Foundation and the Chancellor were for full-time employees and students. However, the Foundation has created an extra fund that people can donate to where the funds can be earmarked for these employees. To make sure this fund would get off to a good start, AFT Lone Star College has donated $1,000 specifically to be available to adjunct faculty and part-time staff. Recovery from Harvey will take a long time. Whether acting through the union or through the official college channels or responding as individuals one-to-one, we must continue to watch over our colleagues, friends, and students who have suffered loss and be attentive to their needs. We will recover together, and we will be stronger for it. Thank you so much for your kind attention.
Thank you, John, for the support that you're giving to our employees. Keep up the good work. Any other, okay, thank you. At this point in time, we will take up the consent agenda. And we have, on the consent agenda, 22 items. And Item 4 will be handled separately. And I think Trustee Saldivar has mentioned that she would like to consider, are you fine? Five?
Yes.
Five, okay. Trustee Saldivar would like for us to consider Item Number 5 separately. Is that correct? Okay. Board members, are there any other consent agenda items that you would like to have considered separately?
13, please.
13, okay.
And I'd like to discuss 15, 16, and 18.
15, 16, and 18. Okay, so we'll first take the ones that will be considered as a group, and that, and watch my numbers, trustees. Item 1, 2, 3, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 14, 17, 19, 20, 21, and 22. Did I get it right?
Sir.
Okay. Can I have a motion on those items, please?
They're moved, second.
It's been moved and properly second that we adopt the items that I just mentioned. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ayes have it. We will now consider Item Number 4, which reads as follows, at least on the posted agenda, "Approve Notice Public Hearing to Set AV Tax Rate." And I would like to read the following motion. I, Alton Smith, move to propose the maintenance and operations at Valorem tax rate of 8 cents per $100 evaluation for the 2017 tax year be adopted at the October 12, 2017, 5:00 PM special meeting of the Board of Trustees in this room of the Lone Star College Training and Development Center, and that two public hearings be held in the same room to consider the proposed rate. The first public meeting at 5:00 PM on Monday, October 2, 2017, put that on your calendars, and the second public hearing at 5:00 PM on Thursday, October 5, 2017, which is our regular meeting. At each public hearing, proponents and opponents of the proposed tax rate will have an opportunity to present their views. If the maintenance and operation rate is adopted as proposed, the total 2017 at Valorem tax rate for Lone Star College will be 10.75, 78 cents per $100 evaluation. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'd like to do a roll call vote, and I'm going to start first with Trustee Lender Good.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Dr. Halsey?
Aye.
Saldivar?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Trowbridge?
Aye.
And Smith, vote ayes, unanimous.
Can you just give an overview of what we're doing here? I mean, this is standard procedure, but go ahead and explain the process and what needs to happen.
Yes, so this is a very specifically specified process that has to occur per state laws, called the Truth in Taxation process, where we receive from the appraisal districts, we received in August the first set of certified rolls, and that is what we have to present to you tonight with this statement where we can propose a tax rate. Depending on the calculation of that proposed tax rate determines the number of public hearings we are required to hold, and we are proposing to maintain the same tax rate, the 10.78 cents as last year, and so that does require the two public hearings. So we have the two public hearings, as stated, on October 2, and then the other one on October 5, and then we will meet again on October 12 to actually vote to adopt the tax rate. So that is what is going through today, and we have truth and taxation worksheets that we submit to the State to detailing all of these calculations.
Okay, thank you. All right. So let's move on to, there's nothing else on that, is? Okay, Item Number 5, approved resolution adding 20% penalty to delinquent taxes, and that was pulled by Trustee Saldivar, and what was your question, trustee?
If you could, Jennifer, if you could kind of elaborate a little bit more.
Talking to you, Mike, please.
If you can elaborate a little bit more about what does this mean for us and for the public.
So what this means is that once property taxes become delinquent after a certain period of time, the assessor's office no longer pursues collection of those taxes, it gets handed over to, in this case, Linebarger is the law firm that then pursues collecting these delinquent taxes. Of course, there is fees associated due from Lone Star College to Linebarger to pursue all these actions, to collect the property taxes, and state law allows us to charge this additional 20% penalty on the delinquent tax bills, and then it's basically passed through to us and to pay Linebarger. So that is what allows us to collect these delinquent property taxes without financial impact on Lone Star College, and this is allowable per state law.
So the penalties we're tacking on are to pay for the services. There's a 20% penalty for not paying your taxes, and then it's roughly a 20% for our collection firm, so we collect that so that we can pay them. It's a 20% on top of the 20%.
Yeah.
So they don't get paid unless they collect?
Correct.
So I have a question. We're increasing the penalty rate by 33%. Has Linebarger's bill to us increased by 33%? If we're going for 15, 2003? 20%, that's a 33% increase.
Well, this is saying the last time that was done was in 2003. We've been at 20% since 2003.
We've been at 20%.
Yeah, the College's last resolution on this matter was in 2003, imposing the increase from a 15% fee to a 20% fee, right?
So we're keeping it the same?
Yes. We're keeping it the same at 20%.
I misunderstood. I misread. Thank you.
But if it would be, even if it was an increase, yes, the collection from this fee is what gets passed on to Linebarger. They only collect on what delinquent property tax payments they bring in.
But we're allowed by law to pass that collection fee on to the delinquent taxpayer.
Yes.
Which is what we're doing, so. We don't, I mean, we just don't feel like we need to foot the bill. If we don't do this, then we're paying, we're paying somebody to collect taxes that's owed to us, so. Does that make sense? We have to take it out of our pocket, so.
Yep.
Any other question on Item 5? If not, may I have a motion?
Sir, move.
Second? It's been moved and properly second that we adopt Item Number 5. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item passed. Okay, the next item is Number 13.
Jennifer, I probably need you to.
Okay, I think that's the one you pulled.
Yes, sir. We've gone over this a little bit, I think it's limited for everyone to hear. So on Agenda Item 13, we're going to go ahead and propose that we approve a total sum not exceeding $15 million, and then some of those expenditures are itemized in Appendix A, and that comes out to 13.8. So why the $1.2 million buffer?
The $1.2 million does allow us to approve additional individual contracts. That's where, within the recommendation, it also states authorizing the Chancellor to execute individual contracts in excess of $100,000 but less than $500. Typically, those would need to come to the Board, but to allow us to get through these for that gap of $1.2 million, this is giving the Chancellor authorization to execute those contracts.
What's unique about these contracts, that it requires that additional over $100,000?
That's especially for bond projects that this is going through. It's just very typical that this is the size of those contracts, because it's with, you know, larger multimillion-dollar construction projects, so just to allow us to move through that at a, because it's regularly planned, it's such a return.
So the authorization for this applies to this project and this project only? This doesn't, right?
Well, this is not specific to a project, but this is for general obligation-funded projects for the technology that goes along.
$15 million?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Is the Appendix A here, are they covered in some of the other items, action items on this consent agenda? No?
No, no.
There's audiovisual on another one? And there's?
So a lot of this is for the audiovisual installation and network installation. I do not believe that, I will go back and double-check that later on, but I do not believe any of this is redundant to other agenda items.
We have to check, make sure it's either operating, this is bond, so some of them are coming out of operating dollars.
Yeah, Item 15, Item 15, is that the one you're?
That's one of my.
That's data backup services, and this one is for operating, so that is for separate services.
Okay, and the data backup information is auxiliary to our main data transfer, or is this an expansion of the main data transfer? It says in the case of a main fiber cut, I know, is this part of that fiber system we put in?
Ms. Julik here, who is, he's acting in Link's absence right now, but Butch is overseeing this project. So the 13.8 is bond money, the rest of this is operating money, and just to explain what.
The data backup, what it is, is our centers, we have one data line going to each center today. We want to add one additional, so if, as you know, there's lots of construction in Houston, and they cut one fiber, we will still have fiber and data connections at those centers, even with a single fiber cut.
So what happened recently at Atascocita, the lines got cut. Right now, on centers, if a line gets cut, then we're just out of business. So we have a, we're trying to get a duplication all the way around, so for every site.
So this is a separate, are we buying communications from somebody who's already got lines there?
Yeah, well, there's lines at the street, so we pay to have it brought into our facility, and then we pay for that service.
But that's auxiliary service?
Yes.
Not capacity we need now, because we've got something that's operating, this is in case that something else?
Yes.
Is, yeah, gets caught.
Interrupted.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which is not an uncommon occurrence where, with all the construction and development that we have going around, where a line gets cut.
It happens frequently.
We've got duplication at all the main sites, right?
Yes, sir.
So, but the centers are so large right now that I don't know what the total population is. At the center is probably 15,000 students altogether, maybe not that many, but, so we want to make sure that Conroe Center or Atascocita doesn't go down, or Victory or Greenspoint or anything.
And also, it's not going to just sit there, we can take advantage of that additional bandwidth as we grow, and we need additional services at those centers.
Okay.
Now, Dave, does that handle 15, as far as your questions?
Yes.
Well, I was asking, was the question that he had, did that refer to 15? I was going to take the two together and do 13 and 15.
So some of this is bond funded, some of it is operating money?
13 is bond.
13 is bond money.
And 15 is operating.
Right.
So Dave, if I'm understanding correctly, your concerns on 15 has been addressed?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll take 13 and 15 together for a motion.
Why don't you just wait till we go through the other two that I asked? 16 and 18?
This is handled 13.
Okay, let me go ahead and do 13, and you do the other two.
Okay.
I'd like to have a motion for Item Number 13, please.
Sir, move.
Second.
Been moving properly second that we adopt Item 13, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, go ahead, Dave, you're on.
So 15 is the backup communications we talked about. 16 is audiovisual. Is this equipment that is, or is this the?
Yeah, so this one, again?
This is equipment installation and maintenance for a period of time. Pardon?
This is for AV technologies, the classroom technologies, the AV systems and conference centers, and what this is, is a selection of approved vendors that we can offer, they bid each project out to these approved vendors.
This is not the infrastructure, this is actually the equipment itself.
Equipment and installation.
Right.
And this is bond money or not?
It's not, this is operations.
Yeah, this is operations.
Comes out of operations.
Yeah, so the other one is specific to new construction projects, this one is new to?
Just general projects throughout the year.
So the money for this comes out of the technology fee?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So this is supposed to be $10 million programmed over five years?
Yes.
How many computers do we have right now? 20?
17,000.
17,000. We're so large right now, and we're getting larger, that these expenses, these annual expenses are going to be millions of dollars for us, which is why Jennifer and I were talking the other day, if you take a look at this Board agenda and see the expenses we have for the startup of the new facilities, then in four or five years, we're going to be replacing this equipment, which is why we need to be very, very thoughtful about what we're doing in the future and make sure we've got the resources to do all this.
Well, that's what I was.
So this just allows us to use these two vendors to be a little bit more agile, take advantage of specials, take advantage of pre-approved folks that we know in the community that can do our work and that are certified to do the special AV work that we have.
And these are purchases that you've programmed into your long-range planning on future budgets?
Yes.
And so this is not like the computers in a computer lab?
It's not computers, it's all the AV systems, projections of the, pretty much instructional technologies in the classrooms, that's what it covers for the most part.
I will say that we worked on the technology budget, there were some fee increases for technology fees, which were anticipation of, we went ahead and asked you to approve them right now, because we knew all these expenditures were coming up, and we didn't want to keep coming back in a couple of years. So I think we're in good shape financially on the technology fee part of this. We can have Link come in and explain some of that, but.
Well, that's what I wanted to clarify.
And in addition, it does include maintenance when there's things that break that we don't know how to fix internally, we'll use one of these vendors to be.
He's got a five-year plan worked out. Maybe at the next meeting, we can have Link come in and talk about his five-year plan. It's pretty detailed, actually, it's really a good model for.
And if I can note too, this equipment, even though it's five to seven-year life, the only time we fund it with the bond funds is when it's a brand-new building, brand-new equipment going in for the first time, five, so what you just saw on the previous item with the bond funds, five, seven years from now, when that equipment needs to be replaced, and it comes in front of here, it'll likely be with operating funds. That's at least how we do things now, is when this equipment comes up for replacement, it's done out of the operating funds.
Our annual technology cost right now, Jennifer or Link, is, it's about a $42 million budget, something like that, 42 million a year that we're spending out of the technology fee. So, and these bond funds are a little different, but we've got to replace this equipment in coming years, so that's why we're working on, constantly working on a five-year plan.
The 42 million is the entire OTS budget, which is a bit, which is more than just the technology, but yes, that's what we're spending.
Sorry, Butch, I knew you were sitting back there, so I meant to talk to you about this ahead of time.
Dave, have you had your questions answered on 18?
Yes.
Okay, so let's have a motion for Items 15, 16, and 18.
No, we haven't talked about 18 yet.
18 is different.
We talked about 18.
I thought you, okay, I thought you talked, okay.
That's a different.
Well, we'll do 15 and 16, give a motion on 15 and 16.
Okay. Moved. Second?
It's been moved and properly second that we adopt Items 15 and 16. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Item 18.
This is? This is additional services to the contractor.
Get you, Pete.
Instruction manager risk based on a guaranteed maximum price. Typically, we wouldn't go back to pay him the contract or anything more unless it was something that was outside the scope of the original contract. So my question is, we've got 10% or more than the original contract as additional. What, how did, how do we miss this and not get it as part of the original cost?
Yeah, the table included in here tries to detail to some extent, coming from a much, larger spreadsheet, some of where this has come from. A lot of it has had to do with dealing with the mud district and getting the utility lines out to this building. There's been a lot of delays there. The construction is actually being managed by the mud district itself, and we pay the mud district. I mean, there's sort of a whole story of how they had a firm hired, and then that firm just didn't show up on the job, so then they had to go back and get another firm that then came in at a higher price, and this whole time is causing delays. And usually within a GMP, delays that are not the fault of the construction firm kind of falls back to the college. So a lot of this delays, those costs of that is falling on us. These additional costs related to the mud to get the utility lines out there is falling on us. And then, of course, the delays in that has sort of ripple effects that have occurred with the, trying to get this geology rock wall in place. Since the utilities were not in place, we also had to get some temporary power to the facility. So a lot of that is, and this is kind of all built-up list over the course of this whole project, which is until the recent flooding, was going to reach substantial completion here in October. So this is probably over an 18-month period, the buildup of all of these different events that occurs.
All stemming from the mud district, not performing as-
This is not the contractor. The canopy, I agree to, because when we had the original building, and Shaw, correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't have a drop-off. We wanted a drop-off for students with disability, I mean, it was students with disabilities, which would not add it in the original.
I don't see a canopy mentioned here.
The canopy is just listed as the First Amendment, so we're treating that as a separate project.
So the rock wall is being reimbursed by Noble Energy, and so to answer your question, and I have this one singled out because I, we were, I almost pulled this one separate action, because I thought there might be questions over this, because we had, and that, we don't mind the questions, we go through this, and I've had a number of them marked where I thought you might be asking questions, but, so this is not the contractor. I asked the same question to make sure, because we've been holding the line on those contractors. So these are, and at least, and I, I think for us, the, the things that were unforeseen that didn't have anything to do with the contractor, but most of it, most of it was dealing with the mud issue, so.
And if I would say too, I mean, for any good project budget, contingency is held in there, there's different buckets. So while we're increasing the construction piece of this project, at this point in time for the total project, we are not over budget. We are taking that surplus funds that were in other areas that came in under budget, but we do have to have this authorization in this contract to, to use those funds within the GMP.
Well, so the, so the fallout, okay, the canopy, of course, that would be an, an additional brought in after the fact. The geology rock wall, is this a retaining wall?
No, it's a wall for an exhibit, more or less, but we had that, but-
Three-story, three-story wall of geology. So give that layer.
But, but Noble is reimbursing for that, so.
Okay.
But the total project is not going over what we had budgeted for.
No.
Okay.
Okay. You okay, Dave? Well, I'm, I'm ready for the motion, so I'm gonna-
Okay.
Okay. Like to have a motion on item 18, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moving properly second that we adopt item 18. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, one opposed? Okay. Thank you. I don't think there's any others. Okay, that's done.
We, we, I think the board knows this, but we go through this agenda four, five, six times, and so we've raised these, we have these same discussions before we ever get in here. I do, because I need to know what the, and while I fully, may not see it from your perspective, I'm always looking to see why we're making these changes, and who approved them, and what the justification was for them. So it doesn't bother us if you ask questions, let's put it that way.
Yeah, I know, Jennifer, you feel like you've been on the firing line tonight, and you're still up.
I'm good.
For the financial report?
Yep.
Followed by the buildings and grounds.
That's what I thought was coming next, so I stayed up.
That's what you thought, okay, good.
Yeah, so in front of you is the financial statements for the month ended July 31st, 2017. If we turn to the first page for revenues, this is sort of the same story I've been telling. So of course, this is 11th month. I know we've started the new fiscal year, but of course, the accounting is still about a month in arrears. We are still working on the fiscal year-end close now, so these numbers are as of the end of July, 11 months out of the year. But revenues, of course, is still above prior year projections, as I've been saying, because there were the, primarily the property tax revenues that had not been budgeted, included in the budget. And then on the following page, the expenditures as a percent of budget, thereto, we are in good shape there. Expenditures are at 84.5%, which is 0.2% lower than same time last year, the percentage. So we are in good shape there. So really, if you go to the following page, the statement of revenues and expenditures, here's where in the first column, you can see what the current budget is for, this is fiscal year 2017 still. And then the following column is our forecasted variance. There's not a lot of changes in this from prior year, but I'll say, or from prior month, I'm sorry, from last month. But you can see in it, so towards the bottom, where we're forecasting the long-term cash reserves as of the end of the year, at the time that we put this together and submitted it to the board packet, we were forecasting to end the fiscal year at 15.1% of the cash reserves as a percent of expenditures. While we were still definitely working on closing the books from accounting perspective, which includes different accruals and fund balance from a cash perspective, cash is cash. So I did go, we did go pull what was our actual cash on August 31st, so even though this report is as of July 31st, but our actual cash on August 31st was 52 million for the long-term reserves. You can see here, we had forecasted 50, so we did come out better. So we're not at 15.1%, we are at 15.63%.
Oh, really? Okay, good.
Yes, good. I was holding that earlier when the conversation came up. So yes, we ended the fiscal year at 15.6%. So not as far, we, when we built the budget, we had assumed we were starting at 15.1% and built the budget to get to 16 at the end of the year. So now, we are already starting ahead, we are starting the year off at 15.6. So that's my good news for the financial report.
Thumbs up. Good.
That's why I didn't want to say we can't hit the 16.
All right.
If you could just walk me through it for a second, because I'm slow on this stuff. On the deferred, on the balance sheet, for the deferred inflows and the deferred outflows, are those in any way timed so that we don't have the outflows timing out before we get the deferred inflow? I mean, how's this work? Because they seem like they balance, I mean, we have-
It's on page-
Different outflows.
Yeah, yeah, for the-
So you're on the next page, on the balance sheet?
Yep.
So some of that, so, I mean, so a lot of the deferred inflows and outflows is going to depend on, so some of the semesters get treated differently, fall, so fall semester that just started, we start collecting revenues, student fees, in August, but those don't get booked into FY '17, they get booked into FY '18. So those are deferred, deferred inflows. But then on the counter, there are some programs, there are some CE programs that do get counted. So that's where you're going to see a lot of play in the balance sheet, and that's where we have to be careful when we're trying to forecast cash, because cash is not always going to match what we've actually booked, and that's where you see a lot of that play in there. And I can certainly walk you through much more detail if you-
I just didn't know there was a timing issue that if we have to pay this, but we don't have the deferred inflows coming in, is there going to be an issue, or are they sort of synced up?
Well, that, I mean, that's where our Treasury Department, their job is to manage the cash flow, and so throughout the year, especially with property taxes being collected in January, our total balance, right, declines. So if you actually measured our percent reserves in any given month, that does change. It declines between now and about December, when property taxes really come in, and then it goes way back up. So as we dip down, and then it climbs back up. And so we just have to make sure we have enough cash to last us to, usually the bottom of that cycle is around end of November, beginning of December, when property tax funds come through. So that's really the job of the Treasury Department, managing those cash flows.
Thank you. Is our restricted bond funds, are they represented?
I will have to check, no, because this is, no, because this, it's general and auxiliary. Do you see the top of the column says general and auxiliary funds? So that does not include the bond funds.
We've got-
But the next column is restricted, is-
Yeah, it should be in that column.
That's, that's where the bond funds, okay.
Well, we got bonds payable on page four, right, under GASP reporting entries down where it says bond payable, 828 million. Right, okay.
But that's-
That's the total debt, right.
Yeah.
Where is the bond payment? Are they listed on this balance sheet?
No, the payments would not be listed on a balance, balance sheet.
By the yearly, what do we pay, 50 million, 51 million in bond payments every year?
It's, uh-
That listed on the-
So it's not going to be listed on these reports here? They are in your budget book, if you have your budget book?
Okay. Don't have it with me, no, but, uh.
So for FY, for FY '18, we have principal payments of 30.1 million and interest payments of 33.9 million, so about 64 million total in debt service payments for FY '18.
Did I answer your question? Dave?
I think so.
She's, she'll be in tomorrow.
Will be, and the day after that, too.
Jennifer, you're really good at this stuff. Is there any figure that you don't remember?
Probably yes, I would share. I don't know my own phone number.
Okay. No, I know, I know. She, well, she has to show her ID still.
Yeah. Jennifer, do you have a building, buildings and ground report?
I, I do, that is included in here. Not only do I have nothing to add, but we're going to have to make sure we update it next month, because this was submitted prior to the hurricane. So I will probably elaborate a little bit further in it next month as we make sure we understand any changes to the timelines that might have occurred.
Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, board members, are any future agenda items? I have one-
Okay.
That I'm going to mention based on what Dr. Trobridge said, and chancellor, listen to me closely, make sure I don't overcommit. But the things that you mentioned in your report, I would like to see Dr. Head and his legal staff along with the board policy committee revisit that particular policy, you know, look at it and see what changes needs to be made, and et cetera, to whereby it will be effective for all parties concerned. And I would, I would like to have a deadline, because you're supposed to have a deadline on everything. I wanted to say the next board meeting, but the next board meeting is like two weeks away. So I would ask the chancellor to move with all due haste with developing this policy. And he has the flexibility of defining what all due haste means at this point.
Now, you're talking about a draft, so-
A draft, well, we, we, we'll go through the normal process, yeah, that we have, that we've done on, on all policies. November, yeah, uh huh, yeah, uh huh, yeah.
Go through two readings.
Right, right, right. So we're going to follow the policy and, and get it done in all due haste, following the normal process. Does that address your concerns, Trobridge? Okay. Any other agenda items for next meeting? It is now 8:30. Time to go home.